Everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic. And one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I think we're gonna have a non-midnight meeting tonight, so there's, there's hope here.
You just didn't say.
Uh, no, no, I'm that gives us a goal to work towards, okay? Goal to work toward, okay, so we have no proclamations or presentations tonight. Um, public participation, public petitions, communications and public participation, any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. If anybody has anything that they want to say, please raise your hand. If you are on a device, if you have called in, it is star nine on your phone and that will raise your hand. And then, um, we will call on you in that order. Bruce?
Hi, thanks, I just like to speak briefly about the new cemetery regulations.
Yes.
This is something sort of near to my heart. Uh, as you know, a year and a half ago, we lost our youngest son Nick. And he's now buried in South Cemetery. And, you know, I really, uh, the town has been wonderful, you know, in supporting us throughout this. And, you know, one of the things that was surprising to us was, you know, starting the day after the funeral, people started to leave things at the gravesite. And, you know, all kinds of stuff. Um, a couple hockey sticks with a hat from, you know, the when his team won the state championship. Lights, somebody left a cemetery candle that, as far as I know, has been burning for the last eighteen months. So somebody keeps coming and, and replacing the candle. Somebody left like a little skate that, you know, a four-year-old would wear, you know, as I said, all kinds of stuff. And, you know, this is really, I think, you know, to my wife and I and the rest of our family, this is really meaningful that people still remember our son and visit and, and leave things behind. And, you know, since we've been going there, I even noticed, you know, other places in the cemetery is similar. I even, a few months ago, somebody left a fried pork chop, two slices of bread on a plate. And, you know, I have no idea what's going on there, but it obviously had meaning for somebody who knew somebody in the cemetery. So, um, I did wanna just circle back to the new regulations. I totally understand we need to consider safety of people who are working there. And there need be regulations if things get out of hand. But there were a couple of things that, in my view, were a little, uh, strict. You know, one of them is that nothing taller than the memorial is allowed. Um, you know, not only do memorial, you know, stones differ in how high they are, but as you know, it takes months to get a stone installed. And so, you know, that would mean that literally nothing could be, uh, left at a grave site until the memorial goes up. And the other issue is, you know, glass being forbidden. I kind of get the safety issue, but for example, that cemetery candle is talking about is, uh, made out of glass. And, you know, other sturdy glass items, I don't think, you know, constitute a real hazard. So I just, you know, want you to consider that, you know, to, to consider the families of people who are there. And, you know, I understand some people might not, you know.
Bruce, not trying to cut you off, but you got like thirty seconds left, so if you could just summarize it up, please.
Yeah, I am, uh, I'm way ahead of you. Um, so, uh, you know, if you could just, you know, it may be unsightly to you, but it could be very meaningful to families and, uh, loved ones of people in the cemetery. So I'll stop with that.
Thank you, Bruce. Um, and we, uh, when we did our tour, we did see, um, Nick Stone. And I, I know exactly what you're talking about, the hockey sticks and that, you know, I, I know it's a very personal thing. Um, I thought his, his, his little area was very commemorative of Nick. Uh, I thought somebody else had their hand up, but it looks like do not any longer. Um, anybody else have anything? There you go, you're back now, Nico.
Well, my name's Lindsay, I don't know how to change it. So I'm a little confused, this is my first official town council meeting since I was like, you know, a kid going with my parents. Do, is public commentary, I'm very confused, at the beginning or the end? Do these beginning commentaries have to do with?
So the, there's two periods of public, um, public participation. There's this one at the beginning, so if there's something that you want us to consider, um, when we're going through our new business or our old business, um, while we're debating that, this would be a good time to kind of speak that now. Um, and then there's a period at the end, which is public participation. That is after we've already done all of our business. So, um, you have an opportunity to speak at both times, but it just comes down to, is it something that you want us to think about when we're going through all the rest of the agenda or just at the end?
Well, I, I may, I, I think it might be good now. And it, it doesn't really have anything to do with anything during the meeting, but it just has to do with length of meetings. So I think that this might be a good time to read my letter. However, I got three minutes at the end and only two minutes now, so.
Uh, you can go ahead and, um, and, and read it now, just go ahead.
Okay.
Um, dear town. Actually, if you want to send us the letter to put in the minutes, we can do that also.
Oh, okay, great, okay. Dear Town Council, I'm writing this letter to express my concerns regarding the length of meetings. I'm writing this letter both in the context as a concerned citizen and as an occupational therapy professional. Before I continue, I'd like to explain the role of an occupational therapist. First, I will start with a very basic definition of occupation. Essentially, occupation is anything a person does with their time. An occupation does not just include employment, it includes hygiene, eating, dressing, cooking, cleaning, um, community participation, so engagement in town council meetings. Um, as OTs, we look at a person's ability or inability to participate in and engage in meaningful occupation and what hinders this engagement. Typically, the hindrance is in some way related to a physical disability, mental health diagnosis or medical condition. OTs work in a wide variety of settings, but the end goal is always the same, engagement and occupation. So an OT in a school might work with a child with autism, with sensory sensitivities, so with sound, uh, to better tolerate classrooms, maybe through noise-canceling headphones. Um, they also work in skilled nursing facilities and many other places. Um, what I do as an occupational therapist is work with young adults with serious and persistent mental illness, um, to help them build skills and integrate into the community. Um, I assist clients in learning to cook, do laundry, communicate effectively, sensory strategies, and the list goes on. Uh, so how does this all tie into long meetings? While engagement in local politics is an occupation, in my opinion, five-hour-long meetings do not promote a rhetoric of equal participation for all residents to serve on the town council or even attend meetings. According to Wilcock and Townsend, an occupation, occupational justice is defined as "the right of every individual to be able to meet basic needs and have equal opportunities and life chances to reach toward his or her potential, but specific to the individual's engagement in diverse and meaningful occupation." There is little occupational justice in such lengthy meetings. Imagine the difficulties a person with ADHD would face trying to pay attention to such a long meeting. How about a single father who can only secure a babysitter for three hours on a weeknight? Consider a person with multiple sclerosis who might not be able to tolerate a long meeting. I understand the implications of setting limits as I spoke to family members who serve both on the town council and Board of Ed in the neighboring town. I just ask for your consideration from the perspective of an OT and an advocate for individuals of all ability levels. One quick solution that I suggest is to make recording meetings a bit more accessible to the entire community by including the time that certain topics were discussed on the minutes, an index, but rather than pages, it would have times. This would allow the residents to pull the time bar, uh, to topics of interest that were discussed. Um, I also think it might be.
About fifteen, fifteen seconds left, please.
So I think it's also problematic that it's only two minutes in the beginning and not three. And on a more personal note, I used to be sad when my mom would go to Board of Ed meetings when I was a kid and she couldn't tuck me in. So all you parents out there, they might not be participating because of that.
Thank you. Um, Lindsay, I need your name and address also, you didn't say that at the beginning.
Oh, I'm supposed to say that at the beginning?
Yes, sorry, yeah, you have to identify yourself before you speak, so we can put it in the record, so.
Okay, my name is Lindsay Summerzaki, pronouns are she, her, and my address is 127 Anthony Road.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, anybody else that is on have anything, uh, for public participation? Okay, all right, so let's go to, uh, we have no public hearing items. Tonight, uh, reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. I know Brenda's not here tonight and Katie is not here tonight, so I don't think we have any other committees responsible that are on, do we, Mike? I don't think so.
Not that I know of, unless you just want me to touch on the Health District quickly, which that would be late.
Yeah, uh, go ahead and, and give us an update on, on the Health District, because, um, the thing I wanted Mike to kind of talk about is at the Health District meeting, some of the reopen committees, Coventry has shared their plan with getting their town hall back open and such. And we're working on one here, so I figured Mike could give us a quick update from the, um, Health District on what was discussed in the last meeting.
Sure, uh, hi, everybody, Mike Rosen, Town Manager. Um, uh, I was gonna probably touch on this later, either under the COVID update or under the manager's report, but we can address it here. So, uh, last Thursday, there was a meeting of the Health District, of which we are one of the member towns along with, I think it's a total of seven or nine towns. And, um, the, the Health Director, uh, Rob Miller, who has joined us on most of these meetings for the past three or four months, um, had let me know that due to what's expected to be an increase in, um, mass vaccinations in the future, as well as contact tracing, he's preparing his office for, uh, increased administrative work and therefore will not be able to join us on tonight's meeting and possibly also for the next couple of meetings, unless we need him to come back if there's any sort of resurgence or anything. So, um, I just, at the meeting on last Thursday, we kind of spent a good hour or so talking about the various communities in the Health District and where they're at with, um, reopening of their town municipal buildings and assets such as Recreation Department assets. And, uh, also to some degree about businesses in each community. And we kind of compared which restaurants were open for outdoor seating and things like that. But, um, where, where we're at now in Tallinn is, um, we, as of next Monday, the twenty-ninth, we are going to have all of the town hall staff back into the office. So where we've been doing rotating shifts over the last three or four months since, I guess, March fourteenth or so, uh, we're gonna have everybody back in the office starting Monday, the Work at Home program's gonna be over. And that's very much in line with many of the other communities. We, no, we didn't have like a pre-meeting think tank, it just so happens that we're all thinking the same way. So several other communities are also having their staff come back first as phase one. And the date that we picked was this Monday coming up, uh, figuring that it was after the school year was over and beginning of the summer. And, uh, the idea is to, um, have the staff back for a week or two, kind of see if there's any things we missed or any concepts or any landmines, um, prior to reopening the building to the general public. Um, and very likely what'll be happening there is probably sometime in mid-July, we would have a Thursday, um, because Thursdays are our late nights, we would do a Thursday where we would open the building to the public and kind of do a test drive to see if everybody's able to adhere properly to social distancing and wearing their PPE and just kind of giving it a test drive. And if, if all goes well, we will continue to be open thereafter. So that date hasn't been set yet, that's phase two. Um, we have to see how phase one goes first and just let people point out, uh, where there might be any issues that we didn't catch. I, I, it's very good work has been done in this between the Health Department, the Public Works Department, uh, the Administrative Services Director has, they, he's done a walkthrough of all the towns, um, departments, as well as Recreation Department. Uh, this, I don't know if they did the Senior Center yet, Bev, I know you're here, I know they're scheduling that, but, uh, Probate Court, they, they've touched on, um, all, and I believe even the Fire Department as well. So the, yeah, basically, we're, we're, we're trying to figure out where there may be any pitfalls of reopening. And we're trying to do it in a metered way so that everyone's ready and prepared and has the necessary steps and protective equipment and signage, um, that is gonna be plastered all around town hall and publicly. So that's kind of what we all talked about at the Health District meeting. Coventry is a little ahead of us, I think they're the only town that is already accepting in-person appointments from the public. I'm pretty sure everyone else in the district is not doing that yet, but we are getting geared up to be able to do that shortly. Um, and that's really what we spent the bulk of the meeting talking about, Tammy.
Great. Okay, so, let's see. That gets us to reports of town council liaisons. So let's start with Cassandra.
Hi, so PCC did not meet yet, uh, they were on for last night and they didn't have a forum. I was there, I got to chat with, um, Mary Pat Soucy a, a little bit, and they're trying to reschedule for tomorrow. So I'll have updates on that. Um, they did send out the, uh, gift cards for the people who were in the Memorial Day, um, contest, so, sorry, my dog. He wanted on my lap, okay, I'm sorry. Um, and then, uh, Board of Education, I mean, it, there was a lot going on, I'm not sure how I'm supposed to report this. It was my very first time with Board of Education, but the thing that really stuck out to me with Board of Education, and Tammy was on with me, so, Tammy, feel free to save me if I like mess this up.
Yeah, I'll clean up.
Um, so they went through their leftover, uh, from their budget and I, from what I caught is that they had a leftover of three percent of their current budget, I believe. Um, they had available balance of one million, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Ah, man, it's, it's a hot day, I've just had a long day today. So they had three percent of their budget leftover and they were looking, um, they're gonna roll it over to the town, but then looking at splitting that up. And they discussed amongst themselves the percentage split of how they were gonna distribute the leftover money between, you know, uh, what's needed for, um, COVID-related costs for next year and, um, uh, like new Chromebooks and et cetera, and they, they did a straw poll vote on that. And I believe they're gonna continue that discussion as, as far as I got to, because the meeting went really late and, um, I started falling asleep, to be totally honest. It was like eleven and it was like the longest week ever. So, um, Tammy, I don't know if you wanna jump in on that one, but the rest of the stuff they went over, Katie went over the Birch Grove Committee, uh, updates. And, I mean, she could probably update us more, but they're still working on trying to make sure they're staying within budget and that the state is still assisting the way they're supposed to assist. And there was just the normal BOA discussion, recognizing students that had made significant accomplishments. So I'm not sure how deep I'm supposed to get into this.
That's good.
Surprise me.
Okay, um, Steve?
All right, Steve Jones, I'm just gonna make a comment, uh, to Councilmember, uh, York, that hopefully it'll cool off in about a month or so at the New Mountain Bike Trail, because they're expecting that to open by mid or late July. And that was one of the big, uh, pieces for the Conservation Commission, they're very excited about it. It's about four miles worth of trails, two bridges, you know, varying degrees of, uh, ex, you know, experience for trails. Um, and even, you know, kudos to Public Works, they helped provide some gravel to make a nice driveway and parking lot up where it's located, so. Um, it's exciting news and really great, and they actually even have, uh, at least one offer in progress to expand the trail size. Um, there's still some potential legal challenges about surveying the land and costs associated with that. But, uh, private resident Mark Summers is willing to offer, I believe, twenty or thirty acres of his property.
Wow.
To utilize for that purpose, but it's ongoing and I'm also there looking into some state land that's abutting the current mountain bike trail to see if that could be acquired at no cost to the town and expand the trail that way. But, so it's pretty exciting. And then the Water Commission, I believe it is, I know, um, Bev is on, she can confirm, but I believe it was the College View Apartments got their contract approved for the hookup to CWC. So they're in the process of that, so they're making progress there, which is good news. Um, otherwise, no major updates for the, the Water Commission, just double checking the agenda. Um, you know, they're about ninety-one thousand dollars higher in cash compared to last year, so. Still very profitable, still doing a good job, no major issues with, you know, usage. They seem to actually down a little bit, I think, even with people being home, it was very wet spring, so they didn't use their water as frequently for the gardens. Um, and I think that sums it up.
Thank you, Steve.
I'm gonna comment to Steve for a second, say, I have not mountain biked this week, it is too hot and it is death to try to be on your bike in this weather, so, next week, Steve, you're coming with me.
It feels very shady, but there's a lot of good runs, I've walked it a couple of times and, uh, it's, it's definitely, it's definitely has some good breeze opportunities, I mean, even hiking it, there's a subtle sections where you're basically making a full run downhill.
Nice, I will be there.
I'm glad that my daughter go there, um, you know, she has not hit that one, she hasn't done anything over there, because we didn't know if it was available to do anything, so she goes to the Vernon Trails all the time, but I'll have to tell her to, mid-July, she can go check it out. Um, okay, uh, John's not here tonight, Lou?
And there you go, um, yeah, so, uh, Birch Grove, we didn't have a full meeting, the last meeting that we had was, uh, voting on a few amendments, uh, to the, uh, contract. There were just, uh, minor issues that we had previously discussed with the board, but we need to have a special meeting just to approve them. Uh, we approved them at the special meeting. Uh, the meeting that we had, uh, coming up was canceled because we wanted to wait to see about, uh, having the contractor get us additional information. Uh, we just got that packed yesterday, so, uh, we are, uh, we're reviewing that and preparing for our next upcoming meeting uh, to hopefully hear from the state as well as, uh, uh, see where we stand on the, uh, construction and if there's any other issues. On a positive note, uh, we have not been, uh, notified and, Mike, I don't know if you've heard anything, uh, anything differently, but, uh, that we have not been notified about any other issues regarding unsuitable soil, which knock on wood, hopefully that maintains as a, uh, as a positive trend. And things seem to be proceeding forward as, uh, as, as hoped.
That's correct, by the way, Lou, no, no additional information or problem areas, so no news is good news.
Miracles always happen, awesome.
We haven't heard anything from Costa, have we? That's not gonna happen until mid-July when the, uh, legislation goes back, correct?
Uh, that's correct, that, oh, sorry, I was gonna say, that's correct, that no, no information. We did receive a communication saying that he received our previous communication, but no new information.
We got your message, okay, um, anything else, Lou?
Oh, that's it, thank you.
Kurt?
Um, so I did not have any, um, I didn't have either the Agricultural Commission or Parks and Rec, but I did attend Planning and Zoning since Brenda's in here, I'll kind of steal hers. Um, I pretty much spent a very good portion doing a deep dive with, uh, my, um, Dr. Don, the guy who, uh, helps out with, um, some of the regulations, writing regulations and doing a deep dive into our zones and what's allowed in each zone. So they'll have, he spent a lot of time on that yesterday, I'm sure they'll have plenty more to spend on that coming up, um, including expanding, uh, potentially, uh, where we allow drive-throughs in town, so, um, plenty of things, uh, happening over Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. Perfect, uh, for me, I had a Board of Ed meeting, um, which Cassandra started to talk about. So they will be recognizing the proclamation that we did last meeting, um, it for June being Pride Month and September when the kids are all back at school. So I had a meeting with, um, Dr. Willa and Ashley to kind of talk about that. And they're gonna be pulling something together to, um, do some kind of recognition, recognition ceremony at the high school in September, which is good. Um, and for the splitting of the balance that Cassandra was talking about, so the monies that are left unspent at the end of the school year, they're gonna split it thirty, forty, thirty, um, thirty percent going to the ERF one percent fund, forty percent going to the COVID fund when we establish that, and then thirty percent going back to the town for the general fund. Um, they are gonna make their request to allocate thirty percent of the total to the one percent fund. And then that same amount will go back to the general fund to offset the uses for next year. And the remaining forty percent, they want to go into this COVID fund that we talked about. Um, and I think from what I got from them, what they're going to ask us to do with it, um, and I don't see anybody on from the Board of Ed to confirm, but what they're gonna ask us to do with it is whatever money they do not spend in that fund, they want to first have it kick over to fully fund the one percent fund. Um, and then whatever is left after they get the full amount into the one percent fund, if there is anything left, it would then kick back over to the, um, the general fund. So, uh, we don't usually do anything with the, with the information on this until we get, um, the audit back. And once the audit comes back, we can decide how to handle the allocations. Um, they don't typically make a request for the one percent fund until around the December timeframe, which is after we get the audit back. Um, so we've got time to kind of figure all of this out and look at it when we develop the COVID fund and decide how we want to put money in there or how we want to handle it. Um, Mike went over Eastern Highland Health District. Um, I didn't have anything else, but I did have a question regarding, um, the Commission on Persons with Disabilities. Do we know how many, um, applications we're up to right now?
I think with, uh, I think we're about fifteen total people.
Okay, um, so if we close it at the end of the month, then we think we've got enough there for Lou and, um, Steve to start going through and vetting everybody and talking to everybody?
It's twice as many applicants as there are positions, so yes.
Which I think is glorious, right? Like, I'm thrilled that we've got so many people that want to be on this, this commission I'm looking for. And we've already got things for them to start looking into, so I'm happy about that. Um, both Lou and Steve have their hands up, so Lou?
I'll, I'll let Steve go first as, as, uh, the co-chair.
Okay, um, I'm sure Lou and I are probably about, they say the same thing. We actually met on Zoom yesterday and we kind of went over the list, we kind of talked about the process, we're form, formulating questions. And we kind of split up, I believe, kind of sixty, forty, who we're gonna reach out to and start having those one-on-one interviews. I think, I think we're gonna, uh, discuss possibly joint interviews or, you know, just kind of do that vetting process. Um, and Councilmember, Councilmember Luba can elaborate further if he has any other details.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Jones, yeah, uh, no, that's, that's exactly what I was gonna say, that, uh, that we're tracking it and that, uh, I think that, uh, we are, uh, very blessed to have an incredible, uh, array of people with some outstanding experience. I mean, this is something that, uh, normally, uh, having been through, uh, picking people to go on commissions and committees before, uh, it's usually pretty easy, this one's not going to be easy at all, uh, that we have, all of our applicants are very, very qualified, very skilled and very passionate about, about, uh, the commission. And it's gonna be, uh, very difficult to say no to anyone.
Yeah.
We're going to actually strongly, uh, encourage, uh, whomever is on the, uh, on the commission uh, to consider appointing alternates or saying that they would like alternates so that we can include some of these additional people. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to stay involved as a member of the public to, just to, to just attend the meetings, provide public input and try and be collaborative and engaging with anyone that wants to be involved.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do some kind of like, sort of, uh, initial training with them too, because this, I think, a lot of the people that are applying here are probably gonna be very new to government and how it's run. So they're gonna have to elect a chair and a vice chair, and they're gonna have to understand how to run a meeting and, um, uh, all the other stuff that goes along with it. So I think there's still a lot of steps for us here, once we get those people figured out to kind of do like a first initial meeting, maybe with the town council, Mike, I don't see you writing it down. I'm not sure how we, what we go about for like a next step perspective, but, um, I think, you know, keeping it open one more week and then just kind of going from there, we can start to establish that, I'm, I'm thrilled. I, I think if we can keep a lot of those people involved in any way possible, it'll be, it'll be helpful to the whole town. Okay, so, um, I have another couple of questions, but it had to do with the reopening, so I'm thinking maybe, I don't know if you wanna do it in the COVID nineteen update, since it's only you, Mike.
Sure.
But I wanted to kind of understand, since it will get to new business eight-one for the COVID update. Um, I know Bev is working hard to try to figure out what we're gonna do with the Senior Center. I also wanted to kind of get an idea of where we're at or what we're doing with, um, the library. Um, I like the idea of the phased in with you guys having, uh, town hall open on a Thursday and having that one long day to kind of go through and make sure we've got all of our i's dotted and our t's crossed, um, to, before we open it all up and that. So those are the only two that I had off the top of my head, definitely, um, how it's going with research on the Senior Center and, um, um, the, what we're gonna do from the library perspective. And then, uh, there was, um, something else, but I, I'm gonna get that in chair report, that's it.
Okay, so, um, hi, everybody, Mike Rosen, Town Manager. Uh, let me start with some of the things that I can speak to directly and then maybe we could check in with Bev, uh, perhaps on the Senior Center. I mean, I can cover some of that too. And then, uh, Mike will consider, are you on the line as well in case we need for the line? we need for the library?
Yeah, I'm on the line.
Okay, excellent. I might defer to you when we get to that portion as well. So what, what's open now? So we, let me start with sort of the state guidance of where we're at and, and then move on to where we are locally. So as of last week, we're in the phase where outdoor gatherings are now allowed up to 100 people. Indoor private gatherings are allowed up to 25 people and outdoor event venues like large amphitheaters and things are 25% of fire capacity, as long as people are still social distancing. In July, July 3rd, we're going to be moving to the phase where indoor private gatherings stay at 25 people. Outdoor private gatherings are, stay 100 people, but with a one-time exception for graduations that can go up to 150 people. And outdoor event venues, 25% of fire capacity. And, and then also if you have an outdoor organized gathering, like if you had a concert or a fireworks show, that could go up to 500 people with 15 feet in between people. And then there's actually one more phase in mid-July where the numbers kind of double, where indoor gatherings go to 50 people, outdoor gatherings go to 250 people. Large events can be uncapped, as long as there's enough distance between people. And outdoor event venues are 50% of fire capacity. So this was issued as of June 17th. What I can say is that in the last couple of days, we've been hearing evidence that many other states are experiencing what's a late first wave or resurgence. They're not calling it second wave because technically it's still part of this first wave, but people who have been sort of out enjoying the, being in public more are starting to have increased cases of COVID-19. So I'm not sure if there's going to be any revised guidance from Connecticut Governor in the near future. I know I have a municipal call tomorrow that maybe that'll be touched upon. But as of now, I mean, things still look good in Connecticut. We're still reopening as according to plan. I know that we're in the phase now where there's some, you know, indoor dining options, for example, and other businesses are reopening with capacity limitations. So right now the story is still good here in Connecticut. Hopefully that, that doesn't change. That's, that's a credit to all, how, how serious people are taking social distancing and, and since basically since March. So locally here in Tallinn, what we've done is I've, I've talked a little bit about the Town Hall reopening plan. We still do not, are, we're not having in person public meetings quite yet, public hearings as well. You know, obviously we're using the Zoom software still. We, I mentioned about how Town Hall will return to being fully staffed as of next Monday. And obviously if you need us before, you know, we're still available by email, phone, the usual. We're, everyone, we're still staffed even now until Monday, but will be full complement of staff back on Monday. Tallinn, Town Playgrounds and Tennis Courts have all reopened to the public. That was as of last week. The, six of the nine tennis courts have been opened sooner, but now nine of nine, all nine of them are open. The middle courts have reopened due to the increased social gathering availability. And basketball courts are set to reopen on or about July 6th, which that's in line with what we're expecting the governor to roll out in the near future. That hasn't been officially released yet, but we're planning, DPW is already planning to put back up the hoops that came down and the nets that came down back in March. So that's next couple of weeks. We did a few weeks ago, the e-alert went out, but the Crandall Park Summer Camp has been canceled for 2020 for the summer. Very difficult decision, but the Recreation Director thought about it due to safety concerns and also budget constraints as well. It just didn't seem feasible and actually didn't really seem very fun, the way that they were proposing having to do it with increased PPE and testing and taking temperatures and things like that. So seemed like a hassle. There's also, I wanted to let everyone know that there is an Animal Control Department is having a drive-through rabies clinic on July 11th from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon at Tallinn High School. It costs $10 and they're only accepting the exact change. And everyone must wear a mask and remain in their vehicles in, to order to participate. If you look at Tallinn Animal Control's Facebook page, there's more information on that, or you can give them a call for more information. When it comes to the library, we are still doing curbside pickup, which I've seen has been popular. I, I noticed a lot of people dropping off and picking up all sorts of materials, books, DVDs and everything. There, the hours are Monday to Thursday, 10:00 to 7:45 and Friday and Saturday, 10:00 AM to 4:45 PM. The, I would, they're having a summer reading program as well that's running from June 22nd through August 14th for, for children entering grades kindergarten through five and teenagers, grade six through 12. And there's a, registration can be found on the Tallinn Library website. So we, I wanted to maybe check in with Director of Administrative Services, Mike Wilkinson on this. We, Mike, he was good enough to walk the library with, with Barbara, the library director. And I know I have a draft planned from Barbara about what she's thinking. But Mike, since you talked to Barbara a little bit more recently than I did, can you explain what she's thinking about doing in terms of reopening the, the library?
Sure. Mike Wilkinson, Director of Administrative Services. One thing she, one thing she wants to do is obviously, you know, normally the library is used for computer use. So I think that's one area that she wants to get open so that people can use, come in and use the internet. Because she has, obviously, there's many residents who use that function. So, but they just need to do it so that it's social distanced and everything like that. She's also envisioning, you know, people coming in, getting requests from residents, employees going out and, and getting and fulfilling those requests and bringing it to people at the desk and people checking out that way. There's also obviously flow issues because the library is a large, straight, narrow building. So they could possibly have, you know, kind of one-way walking, but that's kind of being, being worked out. So those are kind of the initial thoughts. She's, she's working on a plan. We're working on a plan with her. So we'll have a draft to that, obviously, before we, well, plan to open up like Michael mentioned in the middle of July.
Great. Thank you, Mike. I appreciate you chiming in on that. You actually also raised another thing I was going to mention about Town Hall, just for the public's knowledge and kind of what we're thinking internally. We've been considering whether or not it's possible to have one-way traffic flow through our Town Hall. But as anybody who has visited our Town Hall knows, it's a very interesting building where you can't, it's not really designed to have one-way traffic flow, especially when you consider elevators and where they land on each floor. And you have to, yeah, so you have to go basically both ways. So we've been talking about having a queuing system for those departments that tend to have more people visiting residents, whether it's the tax office or the clerk's office, and how that would interfere with traffic flow and impact it. As of now, I think we're not going to be trying to do one-way traffic flow in Town Hall or try to have a single entry point at the moment either, because there are so many different entry points into Town Hall. But we, we're, we're still trying to figure out all the nuances of that. So it's something that we've considered as well. And we're going to have all the appropriate markings and six-feet-distance markers where in those offices that, that tend to queue up people. And yeah, that's, that's another, another thought as well. And then in terms of the senior center, I mean, I'd like to go to the expert on that, Bev. Before I do, I just will say, we have had some conversations about this. I just want to put on record that we are thinking about doing the senior center later on in all of this. I don't think we can open the senior center up at the same time as Town Hall or the library. I think we have to consider that that's the most at-risk population. And I would be hesitant to reopen them too soon for fear of resurgence of COVID. So Bev, if you're comfortable, would you want to talk a little bit about your ideas?
Yeah, Beverly Valley, Director of Human Services. A meeting hopefully this week with, with Mike and, and John Laitel and a few others and Scott to go over to the Cedar Center to decide the physical, what we have to do in the building. We are still trying to plan all our programs for the future, and I'm not sure what date. We did get somebody certified in the kitchen. Fran is being trained on Zoom. We're, we're just trying to figure out how we can do best serve that population as well as not putting anyone at risk. I probably have more information by the end of the week that I can share with Mike after I have a group of people that help me with some advisement on it.
Thank you.
And I think that covers pretty much where we're at right now is on the town side. You know, we, we've been putting a lot of thought into this. We've been working closely with the Health District as sort of the, you know, the, the main guidance source for all things COVID and working obviously under state guidance as well and working with our Public Safety Director because as, as his role as Emergency Management Director, we like to make sure everything we're doing is comfortable by him as well. And yeah, we're, we are excited to reopen our doors when it's safe to do so. We've been planning for it. We do see obviously some neighboring towns are starting to do it. And obviously all of the businesses and things are already doing it. So we want to be able to do it as well, but in a safe way.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, let's go on to 8-2. Consideration of a resolution to authorize the Town Manager to sign the amendment to the 2019 Resident Trooper Contract, which changes the termination date of such contract to June 30th, 2021, from June 30th, 2022, in accordance with the Connecticut General Statute 29-5.
Okay. So hi, everybody. Mike Rosen, Town Manager. So if you remember back in October for the councilors who were here at that time, we had just recently resigned the state contract with the, with the troopers. I believe the signature page is on page nine, page 12 of your packets, dated October 9th, 2019, basically a month after I began this position. I found out not, not too long ago that there was a clerical error, not actually done by the town on the state side, they actually had miscalculated two years from July 1, 2019. They accidentally put June 30th, 2022, rather than June 30th, 2021. And we went ahead and approved it, not knowing that we were approving a contract that was over two years. So then we received a letter from the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection on April 22nd, saying, oops, we made a mistake. There's a limit. We cannot exceed two years. So they would like us to rectify that by making the end date of the contract, June 30th, 2021, rather than June 30th, 2022. No other changes. I did go through the document. There's no other changes at all except for the date. It's a simple signature is all that's required if you authorize me to sign this contract. But because it was a change to it, I had to inform the council before I signed it. So I don't know if there's any questions on this, but it's purely a clerical mistake that was made.
Does anybody have any questions for Mike on the contract or anything? For some of you, this is going to be, this would have been your first time seeing the contract, but we're not at the point where we're changing anything, the contract, except the date. But it does give you a really good insight into, into how it works as with a resident state trooper program, them being state police and, and handling the, the town. Does anybody have any questions or anything regarding that? No? All right. So I think we, I'm just trying to get to the end here.
It's on page 16 of 71.
So all we have to do is basically amend the date on that. Before we get to that though, Mike, I would like to just, you know, I, we talked to Kevin and his guys, you know, quite a bit, especially with all the COVID stuff like that. And, you know, I would just like to, to kind of make the statement that, you know, we are very fortunate. We have excellent resident troopers. They care about this community. They're very good at what they do. You know, they're responsible and they're just good, good officers all the way around. And I'd like them to know that, you know, as far as I'm concerned, they have my support 100%. You know, I don't think we could have, we could have better officers here representing the state of Connecticut Police and working for Tallinn than we do. You know, I think Kevin and his crew are, you know, they're, they're top-notch and I appreciate them.
Thank you. I'll pass that along.
Thank you. So Mike, and I mean Steve, I'm trying to scroll back down to page 16 here.
Well, you have a couple of hands up, Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry, Lou. Sorry, Lou.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No worries about that. Yeah, I just wanted to basically reiterate and reinforce exactly what you said, that it's a very difficult job that they're doing to cover such a large area with, with such a small group. And even though we're less troop C co-located with us, that they have their own mission and that it's really, we're very fortunate to have the coverage that we do. Just sort of make it clear as well that this, this correction is just simply a Scrivener's correction, that it's not showing, we're not cutting back on any funding, we're not reducing anything, that it's not, it should not be considered by anyone as a, any type of change of support for our law enforcement and for our resident state troopers. It's just simply correcting error on, on the contract. So I just wanted to make that clear as well. Thank you.
An error we didn't even make. So Steve?
Steve Jones, yeah, I was just going to echo those comments too, because even, you know, even before all this with COVID, I think their mic or, or they were invited on their own accord to do that presentation on their services. And I think we were just getting to having more active discussions about community watches. And I think with everybody staying at home, everyone's kind of more vigilant about things. And I don't know if there's been a decline in the number of, you know, break-ins that still seem to unfortunately be happening. But I think it's been an opportunity for people to kind of get to know their neighbors more and possibly try and create more of those community watch situations. So.
Yeah, they did have something on their site saying that they're going to have that community watch program. So people were encouraged to email and they're going to go through training with the, with the officers and that, which I think will be very useful because, you know, a lot of the stuff that we see happen here in town is kind of even outside their hands with the current legislations that have been passed and that, you know, their, their hands are tied on a lot of it. But having a neighborhood watch program would be very beneficial. So that was something people asked about and they were very responsive in creating it. And they're going to, you know, move forward with that program, which I think will be excellent.
And then the only question I had, I think, I think Mike had already mentioned it, but it's within state statute that our contracts with the troop C can only be for two years. And that's why it was a clerical error that was written as three, but it should really only ever be two. So, you know, in 2021, it'd be up again for the period of that time to 2023.
Correct.
So forth. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Does anybody else have anything? I don't see any hands up. So Steve, take it away.
Chair President Nuccio, I entertain a motion that be resolved that Michael Rosen, Town Manager, is hereby authorized to sign the amendment to the 2019 Resident Trooper Contract, which changes the termination date of such contract to June 30th, 2021, from June 30th, 2022, in accordance with General Statute subsection 29-5, approved by the Tallinn Town Council on June 23rd, 2020.
This is Lou Lubal, second.
Okay, any discussion? No? All right. I'm going to go around for your vote. Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Lou? I'm skipping people on my head.
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Lisa, that passes unanimously. Okay, that gets us over to 8-3. Consideration of a resolution to authorize the submission of an application for the 2020-2021 Local Prevention Council Grant, offered by the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, Prevention and Health Promotion Division, in collaboration with the Regional Behavioral Health Action Organization, or RBHAO, is Amplify.
All right.
Yeah, that's why we've got the lovely Nancy on tonight.
That's right. And I was going to say, just to kind of introduce this, and this is Mike Rosen, Town Manager speaking. You remember a few months ago when we had Nancy came in and Bev was here as well to talk about the Local Prevention Council, that the town is part of that program and we've been doing for how many years, Nancy? 10, 15 years, more than that?
At least 20.
20, yep, 20 years. So this is, this is a grant that, it's a non-competitive grant and it's going, it's about $3,900, $3,907.40. And it's going to support community-based sort of initiative. This year, it's, it's specifically to reduce vaping rate by 5%, by the year 2025 amongst teenagers. And, and then also to increase public awareness of substance abuse prevention. But let me turn it over to Nancy to maybe explain a little bit more about this program and, and why this is such a beneficial grant that we're going after.
This is, this program focuses, this is what we use for all of our prevention programs. Um, this is, this program focuses, this is what we use for all of our uh prevention programs. And we, we have a two-pronged approach to it. One is education in the community. Um, and the other one is offering positive alternatives for uh, for our youth to be involved in programs that strengthen their skills to reduce their, the likelihood that they are going to participate. And this year, it's vaping. In the past, it's been smoking or alcohol use, um, driving while under the influence. Um, it changes based on what the critical issues are. And right now, the critical issue is vaping. In our juvenile review board, uh, we have probably about ninety percent of our cases have been for vaping. And most of them, you know, are with using THC. Um, and that leads to, or marijuana, and that leads to other things. It leads to very risky behaviors. So, you know, that's one of the reasons that vaping is the target for this year on a statewide basis.
So this is a statewide initiative to go after the vaping?
Actually, I think it's a national initiative. Um, but, but our funding, you know, comes from the state, so.
So do you know specifically what they're gonna have you do with that, with that money? Like, is it gonna be programs? Is it gonna be literature? Is it gonna be like, um, you know, activities? Like, what are they gonna have you kind of utilize it for?
You know, they, they haven't made that clear when we've asked that question, because they've never before told us to focus on a specific thing. Um, but when I talked to Amplify, um, they said that really what we do isn't going to change. This will probably fit into all of our programs. Um, I think we just have to be more conscious of doing the educational piece and the information dissemination.
I'm just trying to write this down. All right. Anybody else have any other questions for Nancy? And this is just basically um authorizing you guys to submit the application.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, um, Steve?
Uh, yes, Steve Jones. Question to Nancy. Um, is this a grant that you frequently get when you put in the application? It's sort of, I don't say it's rubber stamped, but it's kind of a a general fund that you get on a regular basis?
You can say it's rubber stamped. As long as, as long as we are addressing um the actions that need to be taken by the grant, we will get the grant.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it, it's not competitive.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any other questions for Nancy? No? Okay. Steve?
Chairperson Nuccio, I entertain a motion that be resolved that Michael Rosen, town manager, that Talon, in his absence, the acting town manager has been empowered to sign twenty, 2020, 2021 local prevention council grant offered by the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, also known as DMIS, Prevention and Health Promotion Division in collaboration with Amplify, the Regional Behavioral Health Action Organization, also known as RBHAO, overseeing our region's local prevention council initiatives and any subsequent amendments and modifications on behalf of the town of Talon, the town of Talon and Amplify, approved by the Talon, Talon Town Council on June 23rd, 2020. This is uh, Kirk, or I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Um, Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
I am an aye. Lisa, that passes unanimously. Uh, onto eight four. Consideration and action on the suspense tax list for June 30th, 2020.
Great. So uh, good evening. It's uh, Mike Rosen, town manager again. Uh, this is the, the yearly suspense tax list that we have to consider and act upon. Uh, just to also mention that Lisa Hancock, our finance director is on the line, as well as our uh town collector, Michelle Manassas here as well, if we have any specific questions. But all of the supporting um documentation kind of speaks for itself. So these are tax accounts that are uh proposed to be transferred to what's known as suspense. Um, it's not going to be recognized as an asset of the town any longer, although it does remain collectible. And the, the grand total of tonight is a hundred and fifteen accounts in the amount of twenty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. And just sort of what these, what suspense means is that they are accounts that have been attempted to be collected through various different mechanisms, delinquent statements, demands, alias tax warrants, and uh tax sales in accordance with the state statutes. And uh, I know we, we've worked directly, I know Lisa's made some calls and I try to locate people and also searching online. We pay the post office to try to find out forwarding addresses for people. Uh, we work through the Department of Motor Vehicles to see if there's any address changes. And basically, these are the accounts that there's been no avail to any of these previous things. So what we do is we turn over to pursue collection to a law office. And uh, and, and I guess this, the, a law office is called Rossi Law Offices LLC. They, they do their collection for no cost to the town. I know if maybe Lisa or Michelle wants to go into a little bit more detail about that. I'm assuming they get a percentage of the collectible that they find. But uh, basically, we continue to report these delinquencies that basically, if, if, if these people ever resurface and try to register with the DMV, they'll find that there's been a hold on their account and they can't register or renew until their taxes are paid. Um, so just if you have more questions, but this list is pretty good and talks all about why they can't find these people unable to locate, or they're out of business, or some people are deceased. So um that's, that's, it amounts to about twenty-six, or twenty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents.
And with Rossi Law Firm, uh, what they do is they'll have, they will, if they can, they have their resources of finding people, sometimes a little bit more than what we have. And they will go after them if they are able to recuperate the funds, the taxes that are due. They add their fee on top of what is due to us. So we don't pay for anything and they do all the work. And the taxpayer is the one who has to pay those delinquent fees.
And remembering, oh, sorry, Lisa, I didn't say, consider that we have a ninety-nine percent collection rate. So that's a very, very good, high collection rate. These are just sort of the ones that we've tried to track down so many times in so many ways, and they've been able to slip through. So um, I don't know if there's anything else, Lisa, you were, you were gonna add to that.
No, that's it. I was just gonna say that Michelle is also online in case you have any other additional questions.
Hey, does anybody have any questions for Lisa, Michelle, or Mike? Steve?
Only one quick question. I'm just curious how we, how we handle. I mean, obviously, you couldn't get to them. But how would the law office handle individuals? Or it looks like there's been one case, an incorporated um entity that's deceased. How do they handle that? Process?
Does anybody know? Oh, sorry.
Can you rephrase that? I'm not sure what the question is.
Yeah, so I was just sort of confused. When this gets passed over to the law office, I noticed there was a couple of individuals who were deceased. And then there was also one account listed in 2016 called Conserve Inc., which I assume is an entity or official that was listed as deceased.
Right. They really just try to find, there isn't anything that they can do on the backend. So anything for personal property, um, it really just goes into suspense. There is no means on, unless they have a real estate, um, that we can do it that we could attach to personal property to, there really is no means to collect that.
Okay.
So uh, we do the best we can. And unfortunately, the accounts that we cannot collect on, we do put in suspense.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's gonna be a really weird question, Mike, but do we know how much in total we have in suspense?
So outside of just what this year's amount is?
Yep.
I can get that to you.
Great.
That's just curiosity right there, you know, that's, that whole thing, but.
Well, how, how far back would you like to go?
Oh, boy, you can go back to any number, huh? Um, I, I don't know. Give me the last ten years.
Okay. I can do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay. Do you want to know what is totally outstanding or what it was each year that we put into suspense?
Total, just total.
Outstanding.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Um, okay, is there any other questions for anybody? No? All right. Steve, take it away.
All right. Uh, Councilperson Nuccio, I entertain a motion that be resolved by the Talon Town Council that it hereby approves the June 30th, 2020 suspense list in the amount of twenty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents, approved by the Talon Town Council on June 23rd, 2020.
And New York, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Read all those in favor. Uh, Cassandra?
Sorry, I muted myself. Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Uh, Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Lisa, that passes unanimously. Look at us moving right along. I feel like the Muppets. Okay, we're on to number five. Consideration of a resolution appropriating ninety thousand dollars for certain parking lot pavement improvements, appropriating a hundred thousand dollars for the design costs for the firehouse, um, appropriating three eighty-seven, eight seventy for heavy machinery and equipment acquisition and repair, authorizing the issuance of up to five seventy-seven, eight seventy total in bonds and notes to finance the appropriations and the setting of a public hearing thereon for July fourteenth, 2020. So at this point, we are setting the public hearing. So if you have any questions about what's being appropriated or anything right now, you can ask those questions now and then we'll, we'll have um time again at the actual public hearing at our next meeting on July fourteenth. So um, Mike, I know I had a quick question on the design. I know you had mentioned that there might be some some review of what they're gonna be doing. Like, I, I don't know how to word this, but basically, um, what's a hundred thousand covering for the firehouse area? And um I'm, for whatever reason, I'm drawing a blank on which, which parking lot is being paved, the ninety thousand.
It's the Board of Vet Administration building.
That's what I thought. The one that's, that's next to the church, right?
Correct, yeah. So the, by the way, these are all the, the bonded projects um that are on the capital plan that is to be passed on Thursday, assuming the council adopts the budget, sets the mill rate. Um, so that's why the main thing tonight is to set the public hearing for the next meeting after the budget passes. Obviously, by this point, this, this, this routinely happens in the last meeting of the fiscal year. But because of the way things got shifted because of COVID and our timeline, we're actually setting the hearing before the budget's passed, but it's okay, because that's, the hearing's the more important part of this. So the hundred thousand dollars for the firehouses, there, there has been some discussions already with a vendor that provides um consultation or consulting services of this nature. It's a vendor we've used in the past and is actually um, the firm that's done previous uh, uh, studies of the firehouses. And um remember that this is the main, the main thing that this hundred thousand dollars is going to be paying for is to, to, to study that how the, uh, how and how much it's going to cost to bring all of the fire stations uh up to code, ADA compliance, as well as um, up to building code. And then also, don't forget that Station 140 has crumbling foundation uh potential issue. And there's also space needs that the chief has identified, um, especially with a growing department. And if the budget passes Thursday, we're going to have a seventh firefighter as part of our, um, as part of our staff going forward. So uh, there's a lot of things that are be baked into the study. And one of the most important things from a managerial and administrative standpoint is that the study will guide how much the construction's actually going to cost. Right now, in our capital plan, we have a three million dollar figure programmed into year two of the capital plan, which we do not know if that's an accurate number yet. This study will drive and, and show what the uh, the actual construction cost will be. So I think that's, that's the main thing that this hundred thousand pays for. Uh, it's also worth noting that um, if we do go with a vendor that we've done previous work with before, then their, their value of their quote might be lower than the hundred thousand. So it's something that we've worked with them and they've already started some of the work in the past. They can, they can rely on previous documents that they've already generated and reports for the town. So we would have institutional knowledge if we do in fact go with this vendor.
I like the idea of that. I know we worked a lot in the past with them. So if, if they're willing to work with us on the price of it, to get it under a hundred thousand, that would be glorious.
Yes.
Does anybody have any other um questions that, to ask prior to um the actual public hearing, which will be July fourteenth? Looks like Kurt does.
Yeah, um, I guess it's more just a uh, point of, or uh clarifying question for me. Um, so if we're able to get the firehouse thing under a hundred thousand, how does that work with the bonding, since we're bonded for a hundred thousand dollars? Uh, I'm sure Lisa will be able to answer that. But I just um say it comes out to eighty thousand years, you have twenty thousand left that we could technically spend through the, how, does that? How does that work? And what do we do with that difference? Lisa, bookkeeping or however it were.
Sure, I, I see Lisa would like to answer that question.
Sure, Kurt. Um, usually what happens is that I don't usually issue the debt until we know what, you know, the final cost would be. We sometimes will have notes or, or we'll fund it with available cash flow. And then we just issue the debt for the amount that is needed for the project. So we wouldn't issue more debt than we absolutely needed. And then after, once we're, that piece is done, then the town council, if there's any money left over, will rescind the, will close the project or the resolution for that funding source.
Yeah, that, that was my, I guess my big, well, not big concern, but my uh, misunderstanding was, you know, if there's twenty thousand left over, you know, somebody just be like, oh, hey, we need to do this over here. And then somehow slip it in. Um, okay, so that makes sense. We'll close it. Thank you.
You're welcome. So if it comes in less than we bought, we don't take out the full amount, so. Um, Steve?
Oh, yeah, I'll save any questions about the specifics for the project at the public hearing, but I did want to thank Mike for mentioning that um, that we'd be utilizing potentially some of those resources that I think um Chief Laitel mentioned when we did the walkthrough of all the fire stations, that they kind of had a lot of potential ideas already in the motion. We just didn't pull the trigger on whether or not we'd do it and how much it would cost. So and then I was gonna say it would, it might be good at some point, once it's safe for us to all do so. I know um Councilmember York hasn't been to any of the fire stations, I think, at least with a group tour. So anyone that's safe to do so, get that opportunity to them.
That's a good idea.
Want to go on a tour, Cassandra?
I'm muted. Sorry. Yes, let's do it.
I'll take you all around. I know where they all are. I know where all the fun spots are.
I took my Girl Scouts to the one by me down on one ninety-five, so that's it. But the, the fire training center, it's all I've been to, that area. We did that as a Girl Scout thing.
Okay, um, if nobody else has any questions, then uh, Steve, if you want to go ahead and set the public hearing?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Chairperson Nuccio. I entertain a motion that be resolved by the Talon Town Council that it hereby appropriates as follow a resolution appropriating ninety thousand dollars for certain parking lot pavement improvements, appropriating a hundred thousand dollars for design costs for firehouses, and appropriating three hundred eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars for heavy machinery and equipment acquisition and repair, and authorizing the issuance of up to five hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars in bonds and notes. To finance the appropriations, a copy of the full text of the resolution will be recorded in those meeting minutes, approved by the town council on June twenty-third, 2020. And this is to set the public hearing for June, July fourteenth at seven PM.
This is Kirk, or I'll second that motion.
And my apologies, I think I read the resolution and then I ended it with the actual motion. I hope that isn't an issue technicality.
That's okay. I think uh, we, we know what you meant. You, you introduced the resolution into the record. We're, we're just setting the public hearing right now.
Yeah.
The res, by the way, that will be, assuming we set the public hearing, this will go into the Journal Inquirer as we need to do, um, to post it.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, uh, Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
I am an aye. That is unanimous. Uh, on to eight dash six. Appointment of vacancies on various municipal boards or commissions. Do we have any?
Um, so again, this is the second time now, we've, we've put this back on the agenda in anticipation of future meetings where we will actually be filling positions. So uh, no vacancies that I know of are being filled tonight. But you will see very likely in the next meeting or two, the um commission on, uh, for people with disabilities on this list.
Can't wait for that one.
And I will say, we, sorry, Steve Jones, uh, town council member, we do have a few people who have expressed interest in the um nonprofit housing corp. And I think inlands, wetlands that are still in the process, uh, Councilman Lubal, I think uh can elaborate on that. I think uh, in addition to the interviews with the commission of disabilities, we have a few other individuals interested in other boards.
That's good, too.
Yes, uh, Lou Lubal, that, that's, that's accurate, that uh, there's a few things that we just need to go through uh, that uh, for the uh one of the positions, we referred it over to the chair, just for some input from, from them and we're following up, so that hopefully by, if we're closing the, the commission on people with disabilities at the end of the month, that I think shortly thereafter, that we should be able to have, if not by the next meeting after that, but the end of meeting before the end of the month, next month, we'll have a full commission ready to go.
Okay, Cassandra, your hand is up?
Yes, how, how do we go about advertising these vacancies? I mean, are they, are there email blasts about this that I am not seeing? Or, I mean, it seems like we've seen these vacancies frequently and like even, you know, on the permanent celebration committee, there was only two people that showed up at their meeting, so they couldn't do what they needed to do. So I'm just wondering, like, how is this being advertised and how are we going to get people on these committees?
Well, we actually have pretty full, pretty full boards, we do have some openings here and there, but we do advertise it via eBlast and it's also put on the town webpage. And I know I take it and put it on social media and I believe Brenda does also. I try to do it at least once a quarter when we have some that are out there, I haven't done it lately with all the COVID stuff, but I've made a mental note twice to do it and I just haven't done it. But yeah, there's a, there's on the website and also in the eBlast, we typically kind of send it out and say this is what we have for openings and then people just apply for it, so. We make an effort to send it out again, Mike.
Yep.
Okay, I was just wondering what the frequency was, oh, I'm sorry, Steve. I was just wondering the frequency, because, because I was interested in some of those committees before I came on town council, I knew I was out there, but I know COVID, you know, changed the world, so it would be just good to see them both. And I know there's a lot of great volunteers in town, so, Steve?
Yeah, no, it's fine, I was just going to comment too, for anyone in the public and just for the record, if anyone is looking to see what's available in addition to what's on the meeting packet, if you go to the town manager's office on the sidebar, the last option is vacancies on town boards and commissions and I think from there you can kind of see the current vacancies as well as provides the email address, which is vacancies@talon.org, that gets sent to myself, Councilmember Luba and a member of the town manager's office to kind of screen and go through that process, so.
And we can push another notification out about it, it probably has been a while with all the COVID stuff, so we can, I'm pretty sure there's at least one or two other ways we do it, in terms of print, I think we put it into, I'm not sure if it's the rec, so library, I was going to say either the recreation or the senior newsletter, I'm not sure, Bev shaking her head. And so we've tried other means as well, I guess it's just been a while since we're so focused on the virus right now, but you're right, we can put another blast out.
Can't hurt. Okay, that gets us down to old business, 9-1, 9 dot 1, consideration of a resolution to amend the cemetery fee schedule and regulations in chapter A 173-1 of the town code originally adopted on May 10th, 1988 and the setting of a public hearing thereon for July 14th, 2020. So again, we are setting the public hearing on this tonight and then we'll have a public hearing to allow the public to come and discuss it again on the July 14th meeting. But if nobody objects, I would like to kind of do a quick review of what Mr. Mayor brought to our, brought to us in public, in the public petition section of the evening. So since we're just setting the public hearing tonight, does anybody have any objection to discussing it a little bit more? Kurt, your hand is up?
No, I was just going to ask if we should be discussing the, what Mr. Mayor brought up now or wait until next meeting? So it looks like we're going to be, I'm for discussing it now.
Well, I think procedurally, when we have the public hearing next week, we're going to discuss the changes that we want to make. So I don't know if we decide to change anything then, that would be kind of late, because it's our public hearing, correct, Mike?
Well, correct, so we, we, tonight if we set the public hearing, we can make amendments to it now based on the draft from last time. And even on the floor of public hearing, you could make amendments based on what the public is weighing in on and before, before you actually sign off on the final version of it. And then we would just post the, the full and final version on the website.
Right. So from my perspective, one of the things that Mr. Mayor said, I actually found myself thinking about honestly, and a ridiculous amount in the last two weeks, the glass part, you know, I, I don't know, I see Scott is on. I know what was brought up was the idea that glass could go into the lawnmower and send glass shards into somebody's calf or ankle or, or like the habitateness of glass breaking or anything like that. But I'm, I'm wondering if we've actually seen that, like if we, I know, again, from being down there, there's lots of little knickknacks and glass things and stuff, I just don't understand, I guess, if, if we are having a problem with it, if this is a known problem or if this is a problem that we're anticipating may possibly come up at some point. And I, I know Scott is on, and I kind of feel like, you know, we're kind of putting you on the, the spot, Scott, and I know, you know, we talked to the other guys who handle it directly and again, one of them was for really no changes and one of them was for changes, so those opinions were even kind of, of mixed. So I was wondering if you could maybe talk to a little bit about the, the issues or ideas that glass is gonna be a problem?
Sure, Scott Lap then Director of Public Works. To the best of my knowledge, we really haven't had any issues. The crews are, are very careful, they're, they're watching what they're mowing. If they see something laying in the grass, they'll pick them up, set them by the headstones again. But it's that random case where you're not paying attention or a grass got a little high and you hit it with a weed whacker, that's really going to throw it into the air. The mower is also a concern. Again, I've been here just about five years, we have not have any incidents yet, but it's, it's always better to be a little more prepared than proactive than reactive.
Okay, I see Lou's hand is up?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, one other issue, I mean, I've been approached by a few people on the, on the cemetery issue where one of the concerns was, is how we discuss about nothing could be higher than the, than the headstone itself. There's some people that have the smaller slanted ones where their position was, look, I'd like to put flowers down, you know, and laid it by the gravesite, I explained to them about the 10 inches offset that we were talking about, but they're like, well, but with the, not higher than, than the gravestone, even with that 10 inches, basically, it's not one of the flat ones, but it's one that's maybe at an incline of six, eight inches and like that you're not going to be able to get a, you know, a potted plant or something like that, even in a plastic planter on there, and that they're then left with laying flowers on the ground there, which then get picked up in a matter of, you know, a short period of time. So that's one of the, one of the things that I would also like to discuss and possibly consider saying that, you know, that it's head setting height, light, heights requirement or something along those lines would allow the people to at least put down some potted plants or something like that, or plant, plants in a, in a plastic vase or something like that, that wouldn't be, that, that would be higher than the gravestone itself, but it wouldn't be something that's a huge, a huge encumbrance on it. So that's, that's one of the, that's one thing that I'd like to bring up as well, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Lou, you're, you're very right there with the, the smaller stones that are not flush but still kind of a smaller incline, that is going to be, it's going to limit what they can put there. Steve, your hand?
Yes, Steve Jones, yeah, I was just going to kind of echo your glass comments, I think it's been a pretty regular concern is, you know, how, how hardy could the glass be or could there be language that would allow for, you know, sturdy glass versus something that's, you know, really brittle or something, I don't want to get too into the weeds of what type of glass is less likely to break and which is more likely in terms of, you know, vases or those types of pieces of items on the, on the headstones or by the, by the markers. My only other question, which can be saved for the public hearing, is if there's a true difference at the end of the, the proposed changes, it's, it's staying as it is, but exceptions to the stated rules versus exemptions, I don't know if there's a real language difference there between giving someone an exception or an exemption to do something outside of the stated policy if they go to the council to petition.
Yeah, Mike, I don't know if you want to take that last piece that he said, in regards to the glass, again, like, like I said, it's literally been, I've been thinking about it for the last few weeks. So it's, it's like the defining thing between, do I get a ceramic vase? Which is, is that any different than a glass vase, you know, if that gets hit with a lawnmower, you know, I, I think we're, we're being almost like, we looked at this to try to standardize but not, but also taken into consideration that grief is personal and mourning is personal. And I almost feel like we're overregulating it by saying yes to this but no to that when it comes to, when I think of a vase, you know, think of getting flowers from, like wildflowers, you can get the nice glass vase or you can get the ceramic vase or you can get, you know, I don't know a lot of people that get the plastic vases, they, the planters come in plastic vases and I'm, I almost feel like we're, we're picking of, of one thing to, and then, oh, is it solid or is it thin? Or is it, you know, like, is it a knickknack, is it a, you know?
And, and also, I think the other issue that's really kind of hit me is also the economic inequality that can be created as a result of overregulating a policy like this that suddenly you're telling people they have to spend more money to put, to honor their dead and, you know, that's, that's a bad pathway to go down.
Right, you know, so saying, you know, you can have this but you can't have that, or what if that's more expensive? Or what if that is harder to find, you know, and I think really the only two big, we didn't put a whole lot of regulations and I still, I'm still good with the 10 inches, I'm still good with the 10 inches around. I definitely think maybe we need to think about the overage, like,
Height, yeah.
Yeah, like, I don't know how we, because we did see there are some people, like we said, that have like the big, the big overhangs with like the,
Like a Yukon flag or?
Yeah, you know, like, there's some stuff that was significantly higher or had like the metal hooks that hung out and held on to things, which I think are hazardous. So how do we, how do we address that? But still take into consideration that height, depending on the size of the memorial, could definitely be something that we have to be careful about limiting.
I'm kind of looking at Councilperson Luba in terms of legal definitions of, if there's a phrase for like a reasonable height or a reasonable, you know, space, you know, beyond just putting a hard number to it.
Yeah, six inches.
If I may, Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes, please, go ahead.
That unfortunately, that whenever you add reasonable, like, a definition like reasonable height, then that becomes open interpretation and we're back to where we are right now.
Yeah.
As a sort of midway, what my proposal would be is that we set a, a maximum height saying it cannot be higher than, say, two feet or not higher than, if the gravestone extends beyond that, not higher than the gravestone. That way, you'll have a minimum height and if there's a larger gravestone, they can go up to the height of that gravestone. Again, it's, there's no easy answer to this, I mean, and I, I agree with both of you that it's something you know, after we finished the last meeting at midnight and I was going back through the notes and looking at it and it's like, really, this is something that I think that we got too much into the weeds and we were looking at trying to, trying to make things uniform, but by doing that overregulated some of the issues. So I think it's a matter of setting general terms, not overregulating it. And, and then for the height issue, that, that's one where unfortunately I think that we may have to set a limit because whenever you leave, give a definition of reasonable, your definition, my definition reasonable may be something completely different and that's going to create an issue where, again, Scott and Scott are going to be in the hard position of making that call, which we don't, that's policy, so, or amending the policy, so they're not in that position.
So I agree, Kurt, this, I don't know if you have anything else that, you know, this was kind of, you know, you were really driving hard on, I'm looking at the regulations with this. Mike, also, to feel free to chime in on this, I'm good with scrapping the glass thing. If there's no incidents that we've been having, you know, to kind of plan for something that could possibly happen, we could overregulate ourselves from here to kingdom come and back. And I am concerned about people having to go through and, oh, I have to get rid of this, not like, like Steve mentioned, you know, now I have to go get this, have to get that. That one there, I think is a little easier for me, the height one though, I'm, I, I agree with, with Lou and, and Steve in this case. I don't want to leave it open to reasonableness, because what's reasonable to me is probably very different than what's reasonable to somebody else. So I don't know if we say, if the stone is, if it's like a standing stone, no more than, you know, six or 10 inches above that and if it's a, if it, the stone is under certain amount, like I'm not familiar enough with stones, I guess, to sit down and, and say what it would be, like if, I don't know how to word that one, I really don't. Steve, you said something that was, that kind of was good, that stuck with me, but I don't remember what it was. But Scott has his hand up, so I'm hoping he has some words, Scott, go.
Our main concern, Tammy, is that we get the most space use out of our cemeteries. You know, what will happen is we have to use a mini excavator reaching over the top of a headstone and that's why the headstones are limited to, I believe it's 44 inches in height, because we can still get over that and dig a grave on the backside of the existing headstone. So if you're going to allow plantings to extend beyond that, there's a good chance we're going to damage those when we're reaching over to dig the other side.
I think you just hit it for us, so if the stone can only be 44 inches high, nothing can be higher than 44 inches. So that gives, that gives people who have the lower slanted stones, like if it's a, an 18 inch headstone, they could put a two inch plant thing next to their stone. It would still be underneath the 44 inches and it wouldn't exceed the top.
Correct.
That's why you, that's why, this is it, Scott, this is why you are invaluable at these meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have the monument, let me write this down, can't be higher than 44 inches, then I think it's fair to say, nothing can be higher than 44 inches.
So are we proposing in the revised version, red, the red number five, that's the item that we're revising right now? Are we saying that items may not be higher than 44 inches and scrap the monument stone? Or how do we want to revise that language on bullet five?
If, if, if I may, my proposal would be just that, that, and this is Lou Luba, that, that we strike the height, putting it in relation to the, to the stone itself and saying nothing can be higher than 44 inches. And I think that that's a bright line rule, there's the, that it's a reasonable one based upon what Scott's given us and, and it still allows people the flexibility to, to put what they need there. And that's my comment regarding the, to the height issue, regarding the, the glass and the other containers, we'll address that when Mr. Rose gets to it, thank you.
Um, thank you, Lou, Kurt, your hand's up?
Yeah, it said 44 inches, but I'm pretty, isn't there, maybe I'm thinking of another cemetery or, what's the name, something like, of those obelisk monuments that are definitely taller than me and I'm over 44 inches? So I, are those old or am I just thinking of something else? I'm, I'm pretty sure I saw, do you not see some?
I think you're 43 inches myself. Um, Scott, I don't know, do we have any really old, tall, tall ones down there that our grandchild did?
Scott Lap then again, Director of Public Works. Um, we may have a few there, the place where they're really apparent is up in North Cemetery, which is on the corner of Brown's Bridge. But those are, those are very old stones. We have some in East Cemetery as well that are, are higher than the standard, but we don't have many plots left in either of those locations. And, and you know, that was pre-1988 when most of those were interred, so.
Nope, as long as there's a standard going forward, I'm fine with that. Nope, as long as there's a standard going forward, I'm fine with that.
I'm thinking that would help also, like, if, because even if we have a smaller stone, a stone that's only like a foot and a half or two feet high, that gives them still the ability to have like a little flag thing, or like, because we saw some that had like the, the little flags or a little wind chimes or stuff like that, as long as it stays underneath that 44 inches, it's a pretty standard number. Regardless of the size of the, of the monument.
So is the revision then, items may not be higher than 44 inches, or exceed outside of the monument area, and be only 10 inches in front of an upright monument? Is that the?
I think so. The only thing was, I have to look at the marked up copy. So the only thing that we're, what page are you on, Mike?
Thirty-four of seventy-one.
Okay, I'm moving, I'm moving, hold on, thirty-four.
And then also, there's a second sentence after that, that has the no glass items are allowed, that would be potentially rescinded? Everyone else.
So we're saying items may not be higher than 44 inches, or exceed outside the monument area, and only, yeah, I think that would do it, and then get rid of the glass. Uh, well, we haven't talked about the glass yet, but I think the, no higher than 44 inches, rather than monument stone. So, in regards then to the next change, which would be glass. How's everybody feeling about that one? Anybody? Oh, Kurt's hand is up.
I think Steve beat me, but.
He did, I think, it was like a fraction.
I'll defer to, to Councilmember Kurt Jenner to go first, and I'll, I'll follow.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, as I, I said, as my last, our last discussions, I'm, and no, it's not in favor of prohibition on glass. So I, I would like to continue in that vein, saying that I think it's too restrictive and just too many, too much uncertainty with that phrasing of, or that prohibition on a particular item. So I would like to see that removed. Thank you.
Um, Steve?
Steve Jones, yeah, that was essentially my comments as well. I, I think, I'm very ambivalent to the notion of the glass. I think I do want to make sure that, you know, people aren't leaving glass items just here and there, and where it's going to be clearly a risk to public safety, but I think that's going to be more often the exception in the rule, that, that glass items will not be, you know, left in such a way that could cause intentional or unintentional harm to people when they're doing work on those fields or in the cemeteries. So I'm, I'm fine with that change.
Okay, the next change that we had there was in regard to the, we went back and forth with the service members. I don't think we need to make any changes to that. I think that's the only thing that we had left, right? Is there anything else that anybody wants to discuss prior to us moving this to a public hearing?
So before we go to public hearing, are we striking the glass items? Just so I know, okay.
Well, we'll, so we should actually, yeah, does everybody agree with striking the glass? And, well, let's do this one at a time. We're going to do a straw poll. Do, does everybody agree with the changing the wording to not exceed 44 inches? Cassandra?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yep.
I'm a yes, so that's unanimous. Does everybody agree with striking glass and not having that as a limitation? Kurt?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cassandra?
Yes.
I really messed myself up there and went backwards that time. All right, so I think we're going to strike those two. Is everybody else good with the remainder of the changes that are in there, mainly in regard to the changes in the service person? And there was one in there about the monuments that was, that was not our changing. Cassandra?
Sorry, I'm good. Yep, all set, yes.
Steve?
I should be all good. Actually, you just had one question about the petitions made to the town council. Is that, is that going to be just, you know, someone's going to send us an email? Or are they going to, if there's a conflict with Public Works, does Scott just say, bring it up to the town council? Or what's going to be the appropriate process to make sure that, that they know who to reach out to if they either want an exception, or if they take to issue any of the regulations, depending on the level of enforcement Public Works does?
And that's on which page?
That, that's on page thirty-five. It's the, it's the ending paragraph that talks about the lead time.
Yeah, the lead time. So this is, yeah, we're giving them the 90 days from adoption.
Maybe we can add, so, so that second sentence, third sentence, petitions may be made to the town council for an exception, or I know Steve said exemption to the stated rules, and we can say maybe by contacting town, town council at tallinn.org? Or, or should we have a more streamlined mechanism for that?
I'm wondering if we're kind of putting ourselves into a pickle with that. Are, are we just saying that it's a one-time exception for the people who are currently there, or anybody going forward can ask for an exemption for anything? And can another council say, no, I no longer honor that exemption? Like, I almost feel like we're executive ordering. It's a touchy subject these days.
Um, well, I guess in, in my opinion, Mike Rosen, Town Manager, in my opinion, any future council could also try to revise the policy. So, so that's something that, you know, would happen in, any board turnover. But you might want to have a mechanism in place for an appeals process. If, if somebody wants an exemption or an exception, and they want to make their case, I believe that's what we said at the last meeting, that they would go to the council as the cemetery authority of the, of the community. We don't, I, I don't know how many of these we're going to get, if this, if we're going to become overburdened by it or not. If we have to have like a standing agenda item for cemetery, you know, exemptions, but, but perhaps you, maybe we should, we should discuss it though, so before we put it out to public hearing, we should talk about if you want to have an appeals mechanism, and if how, how it would work, maybe through email or for, to be added to the next agenda.
Yeah, I think we would definitely have to put something in place to handle an exemption policy. And probably document what that would be. What you, what you laid out, I think, would work if somebody emailed the council and asked for an exception, and then we would place it within the next. I don't want to necessarily say the next meeting, because we don't know what the next, you know, if it's too much, like, maybe I would say within a month, we would get it on, on a meeting to discuss it. But let's see, Kurt, you have your hand up?
Yep. I, I think the idea of a exemption, sending it to the town council would be fine, and I think we should really, should mean just not an exemption, but more of a temporary exemption, if they have some display that they want to have for a certain period of time. And we're creating a de facto policy, we're just letting people go in willy-nilly. I think we should, it'd be more temporary than anything, and I, I also think that this policy is pretty inclusive, and, you know, compared to our old policy, and based on what, going to the cemeteries currently, it doesn't seem like too many people follow the cemetery regulations. So I, I don't really anticipate an overburdening of our, our resources. So if we have a temporary exemption pile or ability, I think that would be more than enough.
Okay, Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That, I, I echo what Kurt, Kurt's saying, that I think that it's something that we can set the policy to say that a petition can be filed with, via email to the town council. And that it would be, that I would, I mean, I would say that setting a period of, that the exemption, any exemption would not be longer than the 30 days, like a 30-day period, and that we would be addressing each one of these exemptions at the last meeting of every month, that we were not getting every meeting having to address it, but it's one meeting, they can get it in, and they could ask for a period of time, and that it would not exceed 30 days. That way, I think that it would make it clear that, you know, that this is not going to be an ongoing thing, you're not going to be having like a permanent exemption that is a one, like, you know, that is addressed as needed. So if there's a specific time, like the anniversary of a death, or something like that, where you can get a special exemption for it within, at the discretion of the town council, and it's for a very short periods time. Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, Steve Jones, I was just going to also comment that the other avenue, I think we would probably afford to, I think, as resident Bruce Mayer kind of spoke up to, you know, he utilized the public petitions, communication, the public participation. I think that would be the other avenue besides direct correspondence to the council would be, you know, in an email or a handwritten letter. Would just be attending a meeting either through Zoom or in person when we're back to that point. Just to, to just say, you know, I'd like an exemption, have it be addressed, and then just say, you know, we'll be in touch, and then be able to address it at a future meeting through a process, I guess, might be one avenue.
So I guess I need some clarification then. So we said it's a temporary exemption, or is this like an exemption to the stated rules? I kind of read this as, you know, you're asking for an exemption to the rules, to be able to do something. That's outside of the rules. I didn't think of it as a temporary thing. Mike, do you?
So when this was, when this was drafted last meeting, it wasn't said whether or not it was going to be temporary. It just said, we should have an appeals process in place for any exceptions that we'd like to make, or a, a resident would like to make for their loved one. So that's why we wrote this clause in. Certainly, I heard what was said, and a temporary exemption actually makes a lot of sense. I think like for an anniversary, for example, you might want to put something larger than 44 inches up in commemoration, and then have it come down within 30 days, and then just, since this will be part of the minutes, Scott and his DPW crew will know just to be careful around that for the next 30 days.
Okay. So you're thinking temporary. Kurt?
Yeah, just the reason I went with the idea of a temporary exemption is just my general philosophy. If we're going to allow it for one person at one time, I think it should be allowed for everybody. So unless, again, if it's temporary. So if we're going to make a permanent exemption for one person, I don't see any reason why anyone else in the cemetery should have that same right. So that's why I like to keep it temporary. Thank you.
And Lou? Hand went down.
Yeah, no, I saw, I'm just echoing what Kurt said, so he, he sort of summed it up. Thank you.
All right, so Mike, I think what we're saying is we want to change that to a temporary exemption.
So petitions may be made to the town council for, and I heard a 30-day temporary exemption. Do we want to be that specific? Petitions may be made to the town council for a temporary exemption to the stated rules by emailing towncouncil@tallinn.org or attending a meeting and stating the exemption, stating the proposed exemption? Is that too wordy? I don't know.
I, I would just, oh, so you want to put the actual process in here also. So I would say in that case, then you would have to say, yeah, by either contacting the town council via email, or by attending a, a meeting in person to request an exemption.
Yeah, if I may, rather than making it that specific, I think just any contact, any official contact with town council. That way it can be via email, that can be at a town meeting, you know, we don't need to limit ourselves to those specific things.
Okay. Cassandra?
I know, we just said limit, not limit, but do we want to limit to no more than 30 days of this exemption? Like, so, you know, we said a 30-day exemption, but we could say of no more than 30 days, like if someone was going to put something up that was outside of this? No? Yes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think that works.
Okay, so petitions may be made to the town council for a temporary exemption of no more than 30 days to the stated rules by official contacts, or by, by, by contact, by, we need to say something there.
By contacting the town council.
Like, okay, by contacting the town council.
Yeah. Through official means or something, I don't know. Yeah, through contacting the council.
Yeah, I think that's good, because it also allows for DPW to point to that as the process, so.
Okay, one more time. So petitions may be made to the town council for a temporary exemption of no more than 30 days to the stated rules by contacting the town council through official means, period.
Yep. You can clean that up, play with it, but yeah, you get the gist of it.
Okay.
Cassandra?
I didn't take my hand down. Okay, we're good.
I will lower it.
I can't lower my hand, so that was your fault. Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else we want to discuss with the cemetery policy? If not, then I think we need a motion to move it to a public hearing.
All right, Steve Jones, I can change a motion that we, that the following resolution be introduced and set down for a public hearing on July 14th, 2020 at 7:00 PM via Zoom remote meeting. Draft resolution be resolved that Talon Town Council hereby approves the amendments to the attached cemetery B and regulations in chapter A 173-1 of the town code originally adopted on May 10th, 1988, approved by the Talon Town Council on June 23rd, 2020.
As amended tonight.
As amended.
Cassandra, a second?
New discussion? All right, all those in favor? Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
I'm an aye, so it passes unanimously. All right, that gets us to number 10. Report to the town manager.
All right, I think, this is Mike Rosen, Town Manager, speaking. We did cover, oh, Scott, did you want, I'm sorry, did you want to say something about the cemetery policy? I see your hands up.
Yeah, Scott Lap and Director of Public Works. I just wanted to thank each of you for your diligence with this. It's, I know it's a very difficult situation, but we do appreciate all the effort you put into it. It'll help us considerably when we're out there. Thank you.
Thank you guys, Scott. Thank you for, you know, bringing it to our attention and giving us the tour, and, you know, giving us such a thorough background of, of, of what would help you guys and what was hurting you guys. So I appreciate you taking the time to educate us on it.
Certainly. Have a good night.
You too.
Good night, Scott.
Good night.
So this is Mike, the town manager, just a couple of things, because we covered some of the other things earlier about health district and COVID. So tonight is the 23rd, and on the 25th, we will be here, back here at seven o'clock to adopt the budget and to set the mill rate. So, oh, sorry about that. I just figured it's worth noting after, you know, how strenuous this budget process was, and, and a lot of work has gone into it. So we're, we're very close at this point. So just, that's, that's good news for everybody. And bad news is, is that because the budget's so late, it's time to start talking about the next year's budget already.
You're not allowed to talk about budget until the end of July.
Yeah, so a couple other things. We talked about the town hall sort of reopening procedures, and you know, we're all excited about that. We, we've been tracking our expenses for FEMA reimbursement, and you know, obviously, that's something that we're eagerly looking forward to, how that's going to work, and, and going back into the declaration fund. Obviously, we're hoping to avoid some sort of a second wave, but we, you know, that's, that's, that's up to the diligence of everybody out there. And please do continue to stay safe as much as possible. We, we, I wanted to also advertise that on July 9th, we're going to be having diversity training that's being hosted and, and done as a partnership between the town and one of our residents that is a professional trainer that works for the state of Connecticut. We did put the information out to the town council, to the Board of Education, through the superintendent. And I believe we covered a few other categories as well. We will put an overall blast out on the e-alert about this. It will be a public meeting. We can actually accommodate up to 500 people for this meeting. It's a one-time elevation of our Zoom function for this meeting. I don't know if we'll get that many people to attend, but you never know, so just to be safe, we're doing it. And that details will be sent out probably later this week, to save the date for July 9th at 6:00 PM through Zoom. So, and in, in the e-alert, will be a little bit of a synopsis of what the class is going to be, as well as a biography of the trainer. It's going to be approximately one hour training. I'm not sure if that includes Q and A or not. It might go an hour and a half if we do the Q and A as well. But, so that's something I wanted to mention, but, and also, you know, that, Madam Chair, that that's the same night as your council chair hour, so I think you're going to be shifting that. But again, I don't want to steal your thunder, so. Okay, what else can we, we talk about? I actually did an interview with Jeff Gallagher of the UCC Church. He's doing interviews with several people. That's called On the Front Lines. In the past, he's interviewed a police officer. He's interviewed a high school student as well, a few other people. I'm on their site right now. So that'll, that'll be coming out soon, but that was really. So that'll, that'll be coming out soon, but that was really interesting to talk a little bit about, you know, sort of the town manager's role in the middle of a public health emergency and kind of just being about nine and a half or ten months on the job. And, you know, obviously it was a very strenuous, you know, difficult situation. So I did that last, earlier this week. And I guess that's kind of what I wanted to report on tonight. Don't have a whole lot more at this point, but, you know, as we sort of move into summer and, you know, town hall, we're excited to reopen to the public when it's time to do so. And so, yeah, we're looking forward to seeing people in person again.
I had something for you on your manager's report. I was wondering, I think I sent you an email on this, but I wanted to follow up on it to see if we can ask the library, they do a lot of programs, they put on a lot of like talks and stuff like that. And I know in the, in the world of COVID right now, it's probably less. But is there an opportunity to talk to the library about getting some talks or programs put on for diversity and inclusion? I think it would also be a good time to partner with our, our new commission when it gets set up, especially from an inclusion perspective. So I don't know, like, if, if we can get something over to Barbara to, to kind of suggest maybe some of these things and see if they can find some speakers to come in. Because, as you mentioned, you know, we have the, the, the town, the training that for the cultural, cultural responsive training. It'd be nice to maybe see if the library can put some kind of programming in for diversity or inclusion for now.
We can certainly ask. I think we're going to have to find a talk or a speaker or a trainer to be doing these types of things. So that's something we can talk to Barbara about. I did mention to her about, are there any other opportunities or anything else currently programmed or scheduled? There was one thing that I forget if it's in September or August, but it is further out that they did plan on doing through Zoom if we're not back to in-person meetings by that point. But we had talked about in the past, I believe they've done, they've done such talks that I wouldn't call them trainings necessarily, but they were more sort of like talks about today's issues, today, what's going on in today. And I don't know, maybe Steve, you have more information. I see your hands up. But I was wondering if, you know, there may be opportunity to do programs via Zoom. I know the library did just get a Zoom account for their own usage through the library foundation.
Steve?
Yeah, Steve Jones, that was actually, all I was gonna say was that the foundation did support funds, I believe, for the library to get a Zoom account. I don't know if it's one that has fifty or a hundred or five hundred capacity. So whatever events, if we do, if they do consider holding them, if there'll be a restricted capacity unlike, I think for this training on the ninth, that will have pretty much, I would say, unfettered access. And it'd be great to see five hundred people show up. It might be quite a hall on our bandwidth at town hall to run that, but, or to run it through Zoom, but that would be exciting.
I think the good thing now is with Zoom, if they did something, it could be recorded and other people could go and watch it after the fact. So, you know, if they only have a fifty, they usually do have a capacity limit when they're giving any kind of their, their speeches or programs anyway. So for them to have that limit, I think is okay, as long as it's recorded and then provide it to something that the town could, people could then go back and watch and, and look at. And if there's contact information for the speaker, to always reach out and talk to them, I think it's a good tool.
That's correct. I was gonna say too, that I believe they have the standard, well, actually, the Zoom account that we normally have hosts up to a hundred people, although I don't believe the council has seen that many people on a singular call before. But the, yes, I think that there's actually the ability to have more people on the call than we normally would be able to. Because I don't think any of our meeting rooms can accommodate a hundred people in person. Maybe the library, I'm not sure.
Okay, anybody else have anything for Mike from his report? If not, we're gonna go to adoption of minutes.
All right, Chair Minucci, I change a motion to adopt the minutes as outlined in eleven point one, eleven point two, and eleven point three.
Wait a second, is that?
Hold on a second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt? I'm an aye, so those pass unanimously. Correspondence to council, Brenda is not here tonight, and I did not go through and summarize them. Did any, Steve, his hand up? Did you summarize them, Steve?
I, I, Councilor Felucia actually did send a quick summary. I think at the time that she sent it, there were only four correspondents to the council. There was one on Code of Etiquette, one on swimming crandles, one on the Pride Proclamation, and one on training for town council members.
Okay. Sorry about that. All right, that gets to the chairperson's report. That is me. So tomorrow, there's a board of ed meeting at seven thirty. Thursday, we have our meeting to set the budget at seven P M. There is a board of ed panel on Monday, June twenty-ninth. Oh, I have to throw my dog down some, place her down so she can go bark at somebody. On a community workshop, and it has to do with a portrait of a graduate. And then I am moving my chair hour next month because of all of the conflicting things going on with the training and that to Tuesday, July seventh. And on July ninth, there's going to be the town provided training on the cultural responsive training at six P M via Zoom. That is all that I have right now, and that gets us to our second round communications and petitions from council persons. Does anybody have anything? Their, their list to petition for Kurt?
I do, so I have a little long line here I want to read. So I, I received a question from a friend about what they would need to hold a gathering on the town green. After speaking with Mike in his office, I received the information required to apply for a permit to use the town green. After reviewing it, I am disappointed that this process exists in town and petitioning council to take a look at this unfair arbitrary and bureaucratic process. Over the last few weeks, there has been several gatherings on the town green. While I don't know for sure, I found it dubious that there was proper permitting issued for these gatherings. There are many hurdles for this, including a minimum of a one-week turnaround time for the town and a proof of liability insurance. That does not include the bevy of executive orders issued by the governor. My extended point is if this permitting is so impotent that the town will not enforce their own policy during a global pandemic, then when would it ever be enforced? Don't take me out of context. I am happy and encouraged by these demonstrators that took to the green in an act of civil disobedience. In fact, I want more people to use the green in this way. The First Amendment guarantees the freedom of assembly, and this permitting process, policy does nothing but hinder free citizens from expressing themselves in a fashion etched in the Bill of Rights. Since we as a town council seem pretty content with creating and reviewing policies right now, I believe we can still fit one more review of bureaucratic entrances on people's rights. Thank you.
A lot of words on there, Kurt. Thank you.
I signed with Felicia.
Please, yeah, and actually, if you can send it to me also, I can look to see when we can jockey stuff. Lou? Also, I'm sorry, go back to Kurt. If you have anything specific that you want to look at, if it's just the entire process, just kind of include that. Or anything specific, if it's something specific you want to address or the whole entire policy, just let me, let me know.
Process and whole, I guess.
Okay. All right, Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to address some of the, some of the, that Ms. Summersakis. And I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name to, that Lindsay had just presented to us earlier that I agree wholeheartedly with her, that a five-hour meeting is something that, I mean, is, is inexcusable. That it's something that, as, for those of you who aren't familiar with it, as town council members, we're all volunteers. So that means that we, that as part of preparation for this, that we are going to, well, now, holding numerous Zoom meetings that we're involved in a lot of different things, and this is something that is, that is very onerous for as far as, as I tell people that being on town council is the best full-time job with no pay you could ever want.
Not even a parking spot.
Yeah, yeah, not even a parking spot. So I truly appreciate everything that you say, that this is, that being said, this is something that, as town council members, we have to get the business done for the town. And sometimes that means that we go long hours. If it's something that needs to be addressed, that we need to address it. And that by limiting ourselves to a certain period of time, that, that means that some business that's very important may not get done, especially when it has to do with issues like the budget, like various policies, like the, like the, addressing the issue on the, on the graveyards. Those are things that need to be addressed and that, that's something that we try and do expediently, but also include, be inclusive. That's why if anyone's out there that would like to participate, we, I, I, we all encourage any, any type of input that people may have, that, that sending letters to the, to the town council is the best way to do that. It's something that we all get. We can have an opportunity to review, and that way people could then follow up on it. And that they ensure that their voices are heard if for any reason that they may not be able to participate fully in a town council meeting. That, as practiced here for myself, and I, I know that for all town council members here, you know, having been with them for, for many months now, that we don't relish going past ten o'clock. That we have a set rule that we actually have to vote on going past ten o'clock to resolve any issues. And I think at, at some point, I myself will even start saying no, that I'm not willing to go past ten o'clock and that we need to move meetings along and be able to address things fully, but that, but that we also need to, to, to move business and that we not be having consistent meetings go beyond ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock to get things done. But thank you very much, Lindsay, for your, for your comments. I mean, I think it brought to light some of the issues that, that, that members of the public may not be aware of and that, that this is a significant string, not just on the town council members, but for other people that would like to participate and other people that want to be involved. We want to make sure that the town, that our residents feel involved and feel that they get paid. And unfortunately, sometimes that may not be until, till late hours, depending upon the issues that we address. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Lou. Steve?
All right, Steve Jones. So I think three points, if I remember all three, that I'd like to make. The first was also, yes, thanking, thanking Lindsay and also Bruce for coming out to speak. Very often, we don't get public participation, and I know for the most part, we're a fairly new council. There's a couple of incumbents, but for the most part, we're kind of learning some of the ropes of proper meeting process. It might be worthwhile to consider whether or not we should review or if you have any documentation on how other meetings are held in other towns, or if we can look into that, understanding if they establish either time limits or have some mechanism that allows for kind of a time check to say, okay, you know, are we kind of belaboring this point? Should we table it and then continue the discussion? If there's a subsequent meeting that allows for less, less option, there are less agenda items that can be tabled and gone to a subsequent meeting if it meets that time versus overextending the meeting. So I appreciate that, and I hope also people will be, speak their minds and definitely engage in the public hearing the next two weeks on the cemetery policy and other policies that we have for public hearings. The second item was going to be, just in terms of the gatherings, there actually is going to be, not on the green, but at Sage Meadow, there's gonna be a star party being held by the Conservation Commission. I think there's details about, I think there's an e-blast on how to sign up for that. It might be full, but, but just so that helps the public's aware that there will be kind of a nighttime socially distant gathering that meets current standards. And then the third was, I'm sure everybody had their phones buzzing if your phone, if your mic was unmuted. I just want to thank, you know, public safety in the manager's office for sending out that, that alert about the process. And it gives an opportunity for everyone to be informed and aware that we're kind of going to a new phase of reopening town hall and having fully staffed buildings and kind of making those next safe steps for, for our community.
Thank you. And just for myself in regards to the comments from Lindsay earlier, this is like a catch twenty-two. The last town council got, got chastised a lot for not having enough conversation, for having short meetings and not discussing everything. And I think this council has gone out of its way to truly debate a lot of things back and forth where that hasn't always happened in the past. And I'm a proponent of talking about it and debating it and going back and forth to try to find a resolution rather than everybody coming in with their preconceived decisions on how they're gonna vote and just voting that way. So that means unfortunately, sometimes it goes long. You know, I, like Lou said, this is a volunteer position. It's all happening after we work and we're trying to create policy and control and put in budgets and understand how the town is running and, you know, be agents of change for our town, and that can't always happen under a strict time limit. So I'm not of the mind that I think we should say we're only gonna meet for X amount of time because we meet twice a month, and then we each have liaison ships that last for, I know myself, I'm at meetings every other week, at least four nights a week. So, you know, the board of ed, that's funny because the board of ed typically always goes past ten o'clock. We've challenged them in the last couple of meetings and gone longer than that, but I think there's work that we have to do. So I wouldn't be a fan of putting a time limit on how long we can talk about something or should talk about something, unless Steve, like you said, it's being a point that's being belabored. And then at that point, we can always, somebody can move the question to action. There's definitely ways around it to, if somebody is filibustering or just continuing on to belabor something that we already feel like we've talked about. But again, I think this is a catch twenty-two. None of us want to be here till midnight. None of us want to be here past, to ten o'clock. But if it requires us to be here past ten o'clock to get work done, that's kind of what we signed up for. So as far as whether or not we can glossary the, the, the videos, we don't control the videos. I think, Mike, that would have to come from CBC or something like that. So there would be no way for us to, to do something like that. I would assume that'd be something they would have to do.
That's correct. If they wanted to put like chapter titles, that would be something that I would have to talk about the functionality. I know we, we do have a representative from CBC here. I'm not sure if they can speak to that. But I, something we can do offline and see if they can put chapter titles in.
Yeah, I don't want to put Nick on the spot to say, you know, is this something? Because that's also something that could be a decision that they have to make at CBC and not Nick. So I don't want to put him on the spot, but we can, we can send something to, to ask about that, to figure it out. But, all right, so I've got Kurt, I've got the town green permitting, and Steve, yours was just an announcement. And Lou was yours, just an announcement. So I don't have anything else on petitions. That gets us back to public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit. If you are on a device, you can raise your hand. If you are on the phone, you need to hit star nine. And when you speak, if you can state your name and address prior to your comment, we would appreciate it. Lindsay?
All right, Lindsay Summersakis, one twenty-seven, Anthony Road, Jake, my cat just ran by. My pronouns are she and her. So I, I just want to say I'm feeling a little like unheard right now because I was coming in from the frame of reference as including participation on the town council from people who might have disabilities. Now, Tammy, you're creating a disability council. And Lou and Steve, you're picking people to be on this commission. And I felt my message was like very unheard. Also, with that being said, Steve and Lou, I'm worried that, not worried, but I should say, it sounds like you two are choosing who's gonna be on the commission. Well, to me, that's kind of like, and I don't know if there's a way around this. I don't know if people in the town council have to be the ones to choose who's on the commission.
We do.
But it worries me because it feels like an engineer going to hire a brain surgeon. If you don't have the frame of reference of working with people with disabilities, how are you gonna be able to choose the, the right people to be part of it? It's just like, and I'm very, not, I'm an occupational therapist. I work, that, that my heart is in people with disabilities. Like, this is my, my passion and my career, and I just worry. Another thing that I also want to mention that, so I know, and I'm making the meeting longer by talking. How, that's very ironic because I'm complaining about long meetings. But yes, you know, you guys volunteer, but people who want to speak up, it, it's like, I, I don't know. Nevermind, I'm getting all worked out. I'm, I'm like slightly dramatic, but that's okay. Okay, also, one other thing, coming from Mo, Mo, how much more time do we have?
Pardon me?
How much more time do I have?
Yeah.
You have about a minute and a half.
Okay, I'm, I would not. This is why I wasn't ever Miss America, because I wouldn't be able to do work. Okay, so also, I just looked up the statistics, um, okay, only six, only fifteen percent of people in Talon are over sixty-five, and I feel a lot of what town council is doing is going to their needs. However, a lot of people my age who are millennials, Gen Z and Gen X, this is not the town we want to live in. The town we want to live in isn't taking some secretive flag policy to not let the pride flag fly. I don't care how you say it or saying, well, we're gonna, you know, we'd have to allow other flags. I know the reasons why this community is not letting the pride flag fly. I'm no doubt. Also, these are the things, if you want millennials, if you want Gen Z, if you want Gen X to come to this community, these are the things we want. These people, I told my husband weeks and weeks ago, I said, I don't think I want to raise a kid here. We don't have kids because it's such a non-diverse town. Millennials want diversity, and we need you as a town council to show us that that's what you're modeling and that's what you want. I'm like very sick about all this, to be honest with you. This is not, I wouldn't have moved to Talon if I knew it was gonna be like this, to be completely honest. Thank you for your time, and I hope you all have a wonderful evening, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
This was fun, though. I think I'm gonna come to more meetings.
We encourage that. Um, by all means. Um, Kurt, you have your hand up?
I do. I, I'd just like to make a comment, um, regarding Lindsay's public participation, if that's okay. Uh, I feel like there's some, uh, generalizations going around that aren't actually founded in reality. I'm, I'm twenty-four. I'm millennial, borderline, Gen Z, zoomer, whatever you want to call me, so I, you know, there is representation on this board, um, from younger people. And I'm also somebody with a disability. Um, right here is my prescription for dextroamphetamine, which is the generic term for Adderall, so I am completely aware of, um, how these long meetings affect people with A D H D. And so I, I, again, I, I think there's generalizations that nobody knows, nobody cares, um, and I, I think that's unfounded, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to respond to those, um, insinuations, so, thank you.
Wait, do I not get to respond?
No, no.
That's so unfair.
This is our policy. It's our rules of procedure. It is how the government, the property runs here in town, so I'm sorry. We are.
Can I give you my number?
You can contact, you can send an email. Send an email to either the town council at towncouncil@talon.org or directly to Kurt. His, his email is on the, um, on the website also. Uh, so that gets us to.
Just say something terrible to me and then.
Um, sorry, but we have to keep order. That gets us to our last item on there, Steve.
All right, um, item sixteen, um, adjournment, item change a motion to adjourn at nine thirteen P M.
Hold up a second.
All right, any discussion? Um, all those in favor? Uh, Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Uh, Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And I am an aye, so that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.